All right. I call it over our regular town council meeting in November the 10th, 2025 at six o'clock. Roll call, please.
Present.
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 Here.
Thank you very much. Please join us for prayer and then follow by the pledge of allegiance.
Before we ask the blessing, would anyone like to share the blessing tonight? Or would you rather I do it? All right. Father God, just, we just want to thank you for our town. We want to thank you for the people here. We just want to thank you for the gathering and we just want to thank you for your, or just ask heads of protection upon our employees. Just ask us, ask for patience and ask that you bless us in each and everything that we do. And Lord, just lead us in all that we do. Just thank you for your grace and thank you for your love. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I've got a motion to amend the agenda from Councilman Mobley for consideration of conditional lease extension for Growing Minds preschool. So with that, I ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented with that.
So move.
Motion by Matt, second by Scott. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign nay. Motion approved. Approval of minutes submitted by the clerk treasurer also noted upon the website.
So move.
Motion by Scott, second by Matt. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign nay. Motion approved. Approval allowance claim submitted by clerk treasurer also noted upon the website.
So move.
Motion by Matt, second. Second by Randy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign nay. Motion approved. Take a minute to sign those documents. Thank you. Okay, I have no comments on what we was doing other than what was presented and we'll get to that with our new business. So first we're going to take care of our ordinance and resolutions. We have an ordinance 2025-OR-023, an ordinance authorizing and approving the entry into an interlocal agreement for the joint purchase of Aero Photography Services for GIS mapping purposes on our second reading. So again, we had this to talk about and we left it open to the public to be able to make any thoughts or suggestions on this. This is something that Charlie said we've been using year after year. So just there now therefore it be ordained by this town council of Sellersburg, Indiana, the following, as council does hereby authorize and approve the entry into the interlocal agreement for the joint purposes of Aero Photography Services for GIS mapping purposes. The town council president or town manager shall have the authority to execute the interlocal agreement attached here too. This ordinance shall be in full force and effective on its passage and prolongation evident by the affirmative signatures of the undersigned as the majority and duly elected deserving members of this council on this date, November the 10th of 2025. So with that, do I have a motion for approval?
So move.
Motion by Matt, second. Second by Scott. Any final discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, same sign nay. Motion approved. We have no unfinished business. So our new business is tonight is you folks here that came here to discuss the consideration of your lease extension. And with all that being said, I know there was numerous emails sent to each and every one of us over the weekend. Some people lives here in the town of Sellersburg, some people live in Clarksville, some people live in New Albany. So we do appreciate everybody's concern and thoughts of what was presented and everybody's desire to want to continue to support Growing Minds and what they've done for their children or grandchildren and everyone else in our community for the last 23 years. Now, when we first came into this agreement with the school system, it was discussed that they was going to put for sale sign upon the property and they was going to sell the property to someone, whether it was Growing Minds, whether it was to the town of Sellersburg, whether it was to a developer or whatever. Our biggest thing was, is our concern was, is that we wanted to make sure that this is probably the last piece of history the town of Sellersburg has. And with that being said, we worked out a deal with the Silver Creek School Corporation to trade them some property in hopes that they would maybe utilize that property to their benefit, maybe possibly relocating, say their tennis courts on this property or something else and build a school on their property instead of considering putting something out there in Hillendale off Ohio or somewhere else in the, in the area. With that also being said, we looked into taking this building and turn it into our town hall and a community center, something that I know I've been very much wanting to see in our town. We really never have had a community centers as, as a kid. I always heard about how Speed's Park and everything else, always had something like that. And, and then our, our senior citizens group, they was unable to be able to stay in our police department any longer due to the conditions it was when we decided to tear it down. And so when we looked into this, it was about a $12 million investment. Couple, few of us agreed on maybe moving forward with it. It was going to be a tax that we was going to probably have to bring out to each taxpaying and ratepaying citizen in our community for the next 15 to 20 years. And we stepped back and discussed it and decided that maybe this wasn't the route to go. And so then when all that was kind of transferring over, the Silver Creek School System came and asked us if we would honor a two-year lease with Growing Minds in the school system back when it was done in December of 2023. So for all this period of time, I think that no one assumed that there was ever going to be an extension on a lease. And we was going to move forward with what we was going to do with our redevelopment and handing the building over to redevelopment. We had an open house and people showed up and showed their concerns and their support towards Growing Minds schools. And we listened and again, with the conditions of, of some of the responses, I think that we received, it just wasn't still a good fit for us to be in the lease business. We, you know, we're, we're, we're a town. We're a town that, that isn't into business to being renters or, or, you know, or anything like that. And so I grew up in this town my entire life. I went to school there. You know, my dad went to school there and he's still alive at 86. And that, you know, was part of history. And but at the end of the day, we've had some discussions and some talks about that we need to allow this to go back to redevelopment, let them go through the processes that they need to go through and, and move forward with that. And realistically, you know, when you start reading some of these emails, from my standpoint, you know, people make it sound like it is our fault and it's not, it is, you know, it's not our fault. We just wanted to preserve something that was the last piece of history of this town of Sellersburg and that we all call home. And, and so, you know, whatever is decided tonight, I just want everybody to keep in mind that, you know, we're trying to put this property back on the tax road and we're trying to figure out a way to bring something in that is going to work. Now, you can point fingers at whomever you want to point fingers at, but at the end of the day, we just wanted to make sure that someone didn't come in and buy this building, tear it down and us not have anything else to show support to in our community as a whole. So again, that's my part on this taking. I know Councilman Mobley, he has asked to, you know, for us to consider and has brought this into our agenda. So I don't know if each and every one of you all would like to make a comment first or do you want to allow, you have 15 minutes total amongst whomever it is, and to come in front of us and say what it is that you would like to say and, and then we'll move forward. But again, I think that if you all would like to say something first, either before or after, it's up to you guys. So.
You know, Brad, I would like to speak to it before and after, or just if you want to let them make their comments first, I'll be happy to speak to it. I think my position on it has been just from where I don't think what we have decided with the redevelopment board, which hasn't been voted on to my understanding to turn over the property as of yet. I haven't personally voted on it. I think it's still on the next meeting's agenda, but apparently there was a redevelopment meeting last week and it was kind of my understanding that if it goes to redevelopment, there's no chance for a lease. That was the verbiage and literature that I, that I got feedback for. So with that being said, I just thought that we should possibly take this under consideration under conditions of a lease where we could go forward where, and you know, I hear both sides of this, we hear the taxpayers and we hear this institution that we have here. I don't think what they're asking for is something that's impossible to achieve, but I would like for us to leave it open for consideration because the way I understand if we turn it over to redevelopment, at, at one point there, the attorney for redevelopment said it's not even possible to, to lease it or rent it, which if, if they're not in agreeance on that. So I really think we're the ones that brought this forward, the five of us, we brought it forward. I think we should be the ones in a public vote that either puts it to rest or says, hey, we're going to give you one more year. I'm in favor of negotiating a lease under condition that, that serves the taxpayers and serves this institution, which, you know, I've heard the exposure that we have, is, is it possible to reconsider this under the premise that they take care of the maintenance there, they assume the maintenance, we no longer use our city employees to take care of it. We could, we could paint it a different, several different ways on the lease, but the way I understand it, these people need one more year and that's, that's what I'm understanding and that moving forward, they have a plan in place. And I've heard, well, from, and I respect, I respect everybody on this board. We've worked well together for six years and you know, I'm not in opposition of anything here. I'm trying to give these people a chance to move forward because this affects parents, kids, teachers, people, we're talking about a thousand people here. If you put, put a number to it, you put the parents and all the kids, all the people involved, the employees there, this is, this is a pretty good, it's a pretty good knockout punch. And there again, if they don't have a place and maybe there's a place pending, which is very possible, but you know, I don't, I don't know that for a fact. But if we kind of put them out, if you put any business out for a year, it's hard for them to come back two years later and, and start over. But you know, I think if we, you know, if you try and fail, that's one thing, but if you fail to try, that's a bigger thing. So I really think that we should have some conversation, we should have some discussion, at least hear their side that, hey, you know, this is what they bring to the community. You know, I'm on board with, I don't see why extending the lease because do we have a clear path as far as what we're doing with redevelopment? You know, I've heard that, well, we may have some investors, but we don't know that yet. So what would a year difference make? The building's still going to be there. If we don't put the burden on the taxpayers and they accept the lease under our conditions, you know, it's a win-win for both parties. It's just something that I'd like to throw out there and I'd like to, for us to have some, you know, conversation and consideration over it. That's where we're at.
Okay, all right. Brad, I have a paragraph to read that I kind of worked on a little bit with Charlie today. While the town understands and is sympathetic to the nature of this decision and the impact of those who are clients of a private business in the hope of the existing business, Growing Minds preschool, will participate in this coming RFP, which basically means they'll be able to bid and purchase the building when it goes up for sale, just like anybody else. It is the opinion of a majority of the council that the in-town residents, the taxpayers of the town of Sellersburg, should not fund the operations of a private business in property owned by the town past the original lease that was established by Silver Creek School Corporation prior to the town coming to own the property. To simply allow a private business to continue to operate at the location past the expiration date is not fair to any of the other businesses within the town that may want to have an opportunity to also occupy the space. It is also not the role of the taxpayers of the town of Sellersburg to fund the operations of this business at a facility currently owned by the town. Even if all expenses associating the property, utilities, maintenance, costs, et cetera, were covered 100% by the private business, allowing the exec, the existing private business to continue to occupy public property without opening it up to all businesses is not proper and give that business an unfair advantage. The best course of the action by the town council and in the best interest of the taxpayers of the town of Sellersburg is to honor the existing lease per the agreement with the town acquired, when the town acquired the property and the lease from Silver Creek School Corporation. The original intent of the town acquiring the building and property was to work to find a private owner of the, for the property who will honor the historic nature of the structure, preserve it and become a taxpaying steward of the property. That direction has not changed. Okay, all right. Anybody else? Okay, all right. All right, okay. All right, who wants to start? Okay, all right, Rob.
First of all, I'd just like to say thank you to anyone who came.
Excuse me, we need names and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Robin Long. My address is 2408 Plum Woods Drive, Sellersburg.
Okay.
I'd like to say thank you to anyone that came here. I just wanted to see it show again, but I don't want to see it as important for our minds, because I don't know everybody. So I appreciate that very much. When we started this process of the school corporation and the town and everything, Carrie and I, who own Growing Minds, that was all done, we, we weren't a part of any of that, which, you know, is fine. We're just the people that have the lease. But all through this process, the communication, we haven't gotten that. We didn't get anything about the RFP until the very end of last school year. So we've worked hard to try to found out more information, to, to try to find a building, to try to do that. We went to the redevelopment commission last weekend, we, or last week. From what I understood, the RFP won't even be released until the holidays. And so for us as a business that has to plan starting in for our next school year, that even if we applied for the RFP, we wouldn't know by the time we would need to know. So for that and us, it doesn't work. Now, when we went in September, we thought it was going to be a little quicker and we were like, great, then we should know more. So that RFP process for us is going to take too long to be able to plan for our next school year. So that's one of the things that we're in the situation of. But we've been part of this community for 23 years. Carrie started this long, long before I joined and we've done our best to try to serve kids all in Sellersburg, New Albany, Jeff, I mean, we've grown. It used to be all Sellersburg, you know, it used to be all kids. About 85% of our kids go on to go to Silver Creek. So I do feel like although I know that the address part and where we live and all that is very important, it also is part of our community. And when you talk about the history and preserving the history of the building, to me, there is no greater way that you can preserve history than investing in the children. And so to me, I just would ask, we've, we've asked for what the expenses are and we've been given those and we said we would cover every expense, you know, that was given to us, we said we would cover. So we're just asking for one year so that we can then move on instead of have to move twice. You know, we're 14 classrooms. It's a major expense, a major process, those kind of things. So that's why we're asking for that one-year extension. So we also, I think, bring a lot of benefit to Sellersburg, a lot of people, a lot of things, the businesses. So I just ask that you think about that. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
Excuse me, 5030, that's three planes, I'm from Indiana. You may or may not recognize me, it's been a minute since I've been here in my professional capacity.
Could you please speak in the microphone? I have a gentleman always gets on us about this.
I'm not here in a professional capacity and I am here as a parent for, for two children who attend Growing Minds, one of which is going to be graduating this year, but one of which I will have for hopefully a couple more years and honestly, hopefully I'll have a third one here in the next couple of years. And I just want to talk about a few of the points that we heard here already. One, I'm going to jump on towards the end, I think it was presented by Mr. Langford, is going about to the intent of the town in acquiring the property is to find a future owner. I would actually ask the council to direct their attention to the unified development ordinance and the intent that is listed out in there under chapter one, section E. The intent of the UDO is to promote the public health, safety, morals and general welfare of the jurisdiction, which does include protecting the character stability of residential institutional areas. And institutional is defined as including all public and private schools and specifically including preschools. These are actually also already determined under the zoning of downtown district to be permitted uses. They're not even special exceptions at this point. And I want to point that out because it's already been specifically determined by the town to look at this area, which includes this school and say, hey, we want preschools here. That's already been conclusively decided and unless and until there is a, an amendment to the UDO, the town has to follow that. And one way it can go about following that is by renewing this lease, whether it's for one year or for however long that's going to go on in the future. You know, sorry about that. I took a lot of notes while you were talking and now I'm a little bit jumbled. There was, you know, in that vein, some talk about funding private business. It's not really funding a private business here, especially with the offer that they're going to be supporting, you know, the maintenance and whatnot. And in all honesty, if you look at what Growing Minds has brought to the community, the public schools thereafter, once the kids graduate, go to them, they're essentially getting a kickback in the education that these kids are coming in with, allowing the teachers to have better ability to pay attention to other students and to get those test scores up. And think about how much Sellersburg specifically has grown over the last several years, how much the schools have already grown and have had to expand. So the preschools, maybe not limited to Growing Minds, but including them, you know, have served the community in a substantial way there. There's been some talk about other businesses have been deprived of an opportunity, but I haven't, and maybe this is behind the scenes, but it's not been put before the meeting here tonight and I would assume can't really be part of the minutes. There hasn't been evidence of other businesses complaining that they've been deprived of opportunities. I hadn't heard anything about this business has submitted a question or proposal or anything of that nature at this point in time. And before the council, when you make your decision here tonight, if any, you have to consider only the actual facts that are before you at this time. This is not theories, this is not emotions about anything else that could happen or anything that has not been put before the, before the council for the public to respond to either. So I would like the council to, you know, look to that as well. And in that vein as well, it, I would ask that all the emails that have been sent to the council over the weekend and prior in support thereof, and I guess I'll be fair, Eddie, against, I'll also be of the record for the purposes of this meeting and whatever vote is taken thereon. And again, okay, so there was also some talk about it is not a good fit for the town to be in the lease business. I will say that while maybe it is not the desire for the town to be in certain lease businesses, it's actually specifically contemplated by Indiana Code 36529, section two, for the legislative body of a town to, to hold interest in property in order to benefit the town, but part of that is including leases to really anybody. It's not been limited in that fashion. So by entering into a renewal of this lease, you are promoting the statutory purpose therein. And it actually is specifically one of the intents of the town council to be able to enter into that lease business. So one more minute. All right, that's all I have to say. Again, I would just ask that you can take all those factual considerations and what the purpose of the, not only the UDO, but the Indiana code requires that you do. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay.
Carrie Eckert, 1206 Ebenezer Church Road, Memphis. I just want to take a minute. There's not much more I can say that has not already been said or that you guys have not read in emails that have been sent to you, other than I just hope that you guys can take in consideration giving us one more year so that we can continue to serve the children, like Robin said, not only of Sellersburg, but the surrounding areas. I thought one point, you know, I've heard a lot of talk that, you know, a Jeffersonville address came in or a Clarksville or a Charlestown. And while that's definitely true, with Indiana being a school choice state, it doesn't mean they, they don't go to Silver Creek. Almost like Robin said, 85% of our kids go on to go to Silver Creek, which is in our town. They don't have to have a Sellersburg address anymore. I didn't know if you guys were aware of that or not, but they can have a different address and still go to Silver Creek now because the tax dollars follow the scholars where they go to school. So I did want to just bring that up to make sure you guys understood that. Like has already been said, we're asking for one more year. We have a very promising opportunity that has presented itself to us for '27, '28 and beyond that we are very excited about and will learn more about in the coming weeks. So we just need that gap to be bridged. It would make sense to stay there. We're there, our things are there. That's just all I can ask, if you guys can give us another year and then won't have to worry about us anymore.
Thank you. Thanks, Carrie. Okay. All right. Are you sure, Mr. Pierce? Got four minutes. All we have left. There's four minutes left on the clock.
Charlie Pierce, 9108 Highway 60. I wasn't here to talk, I didn't know this was going to be part of the agenda, so I wasn't ready. I got stuff to talk about later. But as I listen to this, I've been to the redevelopment commission. I know that they're getting ready to prepare the RFP request for proposals from people, what they want to do with the building. So I guess my question is, how long's it going to take to prepare the RFP? How long are you going to give the developers to develop a plan and submit their plans, what they're going to do with the building from the RFP? And then why can't, I mean, it's going to probably take, what, six months, four, six months to get all that done? So they're asking for a one year. So if you extend the lease for one year, you really only extend it maybe eight months and then that can be part of the RFP. But in the RFP, okay, here's what we want to do. We want your proposals, what you're going to do with the building, but knowing in fact that construction can't start for one year or whatever that timeframe is.
Well, it'd be June of 2027, so realistically you're talking 19 months from now is how long you would be holding someone.
I didn't know when this one expired. Okay.
Right now it's set to expire on June the 1st of 2026.
Okay.
They're asking for an additional year.
Okay. I didn't, I wasn't aware of all of that, but just a thought, just for what it's worth.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Still have two minutes. Anybody else have anything else to say? and, uh, so, uh, anybody on the council have anything else to say? Matt?
So, I appreciate everybody coming in to, uh, voice their opinion or give support to Growing Minds and their long history here in the town of Sellersburg. Can you hear me now, Charlie? Can you hear me? Did you get on me when, when you can't hear? Okay. Uh, so I do appreciate that. Um, and there's, there's no questioning the value that Growing Minds has brought to the town of Sellersburg in the course of the last twenty-three, twenty-three years. Um, that's, and a lot of these agreements were prior to the town entering into this deal with the Silver Creek School Corporation where land was exchanged for the building. I understand the historical portion of trying to save facades and I, I, I have differing opinions on that, okay? So, everyone has a different opinion on facades and keeping historical perspective. I also appreciate everything that you all have done over the course of, uh, more than two decades. The facts are that this lease expires June first, or May thirty, whatever it is, the end of May of twenty-twenty-six. The request is that you're looking for an, an extension to May thirty-one of twenty-twenty-seven. So, the other facts are, had we had not entered into the agreement with the Silver Creek School Corporation, they were more than likely gonna just put a for sale sign up in front of that building and sell it to the highest bidder, whether you all were in that buil, building or not.
Sell the school building, was that what? Probably disposed of.
There's, there's a way to, you and I both know there's a way to dispose of that building had they wanted to, and then the town would have, I understand that, but the town, at that point, once it was disposed of, in whatever manner, would have had zero say in the, in what goes on with that building, unless it's zoning, uh, certain zoning requirements. So, somebody could have came in and put up more apartments. We all know, everybody loves more apartments in the town of Sellersburg, we, we, we get it, I, I've heard that for six years. So, we would have had no say, so we entered into this agreement to trade some land so the school can continue to grow. There's a division, a separation, that's well-intended between town operations and government and school board operations and government, two completely separate things. I support Silver Creek Schools, I think they know that. I don't think you would find a, a council in this area that's been more supportive of other school districts than this, this council, uh, over the years. So, getting into the rest of the, the facts of, you are now a tenant of the town of Sellersburg. Uh, and in that agreement, do you pay for gas, water, electric, any of those items?
Talking now, but we ask for all the expenses and we said we're covered.
But currently, you don't pay those.
Correct.
So, because I was told to, I was asked by a previous speaker to consider the factual nature of what we're dealing with, not a hypothetical in the future, or what has happened way before in the past. I, I don't know what Silver Creek, sorry, that's the time. Um, I have more than four minutes, right? So, so, we're dealing with what we have right here, right now, and then in the last meeting, I said, well, what is the business plan? So, if I operate a business, and I go to a bank, just like you're familiar with as a business owner, and we say, hey, we want a loan of a hundred thousand dollars, they're gonna say, what is your business plan? So, in order for me, as a, as a councilman, uh, to look at, we want another year's lease, and then I heard, yeah, then after that, you won't have to worry about us, well, that's not, that's not the attitude that I want. I would always want to worry about, are you staying in Sellersburg? Are you leaving in Sellersburg? Are you gonna continue to operate your business here? Are you gonna move to another town, another county? Uh, because that would affect my decision of, well, should I grant or vote in favor of another year? What is that business model? What is that business plan? Because we all know that there's no way in the world when we go to a bank and we have no plan, even if it's for a year, eighteen months, or ten years, that that bank is gonna guarantee it and give us that hundred thousand dollars. So, I said, well, what is the plan, other than, hey, just, because then in the back of my mind, I say, and this is just my thought process, it doesn't mean it's, it's the way it is, is, well, what if we get to twenty-twenty-seven, and then this room is full of people again that says, hey, give us another year, we need six or eight more months? So, I'm looking for, what is the model and plan to get you all where you need to be, similar to what Councilman Moe said, and to assure the town that whoever, at whatever time comes to invest in that property, no, not one of us in here would buy a house and go, hey, gonna have to wait ten months to get into it. Not one of us would do that. We would, we would be, I, I understand, it's not a house, sir, okay? You had your opportunity to speak, let me speak, okay? None of us would enter into that agreement. So, I'm looking for, what is the best plan on both sides, okay? And then, we also have to understand that we have a responsibility to the taxpayer. Um, there are certain taxpayers, none, none that have come forward to this point, but they, they very well may, after they see this public meeting, and go, I want the same deal they have. I want the same exact deal, the same space on floor number three that they have. It could be a competitor, whatever. And then, now we find ourselves in a spot that, are you getting a favorable deal? Or are we footing the bill and giving someone an unfair advantage? And am I talking, saying hypothetically, I'm just saying that a taxpayer would have the right to say that, if they wanted to. Uh, so, what is the best plan? And do you have a business model for the next year, eighteen months, eight months? Is the plan to stay in town, leave town? What, that all factors into decision making.
Right, and that is what we've been working on to get to the next place that we're about to be, that what many people in Sellersburg churches and developers around the area, we've gone to bowling alley, I mean, that's what we would love to do with Peter and Sellersburg. Right now, we have not found a place in Sellersburg, so that's what we're working towards. But we are, I mean, what you're saying is that we're, I mean, we, our business plan is very different based on where we go. That's, that's what we're trying to say. So, that's, if we have a year lease, then we know what we can do, and then we'll go from there. So, I mean, I don't, we don't have that answer yet, but we've been meeting and meeting and meeting with people to try to get to that.
So, in the last year, you, there's been no, like, option one, option two, this is where we're gonna go, this is what we're gonna do, hey, the town's not gonna renew the lease, so we have.
Yes, but we have, we've been working on that, yeah, and we have, and we would be piecemealing together, so we would probably, if, right now, if you say no, we will probably piecemeal the next year together. We will have smaller classes, we will not have as many opportunities for families, but we won't have that much. We've talked to the basement of Speed Church, we've talked to the Church of Christ at Hamburg, Hamburg, we, I mean, we've met countless people and tried to come up with a thing, and we probably have four locations, and it would be, you know, different, different places, our liability insurance would go through the roof, because now we have to do that, so that's, I mean, we have been working on that, but without having, I mean, we would love to be in one building under one roof, that's our goal, and that's what we're working towards, and that's what we have, you know, meetings about later this month for twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
What is your liability insurance now?
Seventeen thousand dollars. We now have big terrorism charges.
How many, how many?
Terrorism, uh, liability insurance because of all the school violence, so it's gone drastically in the last three years.
And how many students do you have there currently?
Three hundred and ninety-four.
Four hundred, roughly. So, if the town was to offer a lease extension of fair market value for square footage, would that be plus utilities and everything that would come along with a normal business to tenant, or owner-to-tenant type lease, would you be in favor of that?
We would have to know what the fair market value is, and then we also would have, I mean, because our, our experience now with the, I mean.
How many square feet do you, do you lease now, or use now?
I don't know, we have square footage leases, my roof.
Do we know?
It's fifteen thousand, the building, the three-story building is fifteen thousand.
They don't use all three stories.
Well, but they use probably, they use the gym, along with the other part, the other two rooms, so there's, there's a total of forty, there's a little, yeah.
So, the way the, the current lease reads, I think it's eight classrooms, but it sounds like you all might be in fourteen, and.
We have, we're counting that in with our two-year, we have, we, we also lease from Sellersburg, Indiana Memphis Church, so that's part of our number.
So, how much just from this particular property? This piece, eight, is it eight classrooms?
Ten classrooms, that we have classes in, and we have a storage room.
Gotcha. Because Councilman, where, where it gets a little bit tricky from a legal standpoint is the town council itself cannot lease property, can convey, can sell, the Redevelopment Commission does have those powers. However, there's a whole process with getting two appraisals, what is the fair market value, and that, it kind of becomes this gray area, because we assume this lease, but the lease terminates. So, even if the town council said, yes, let's go ahead and extend this lease, I would have to advise them to go ahead and get appraisal started immediately, and then we have to open this up to everyone. It's not like they can just hand it to you legally, because if the next person in line wanted to challenge and say, maybe you're willing to pay ten dollars a square foot, I have no idea making that up, but there's somebody else in line that wants to pay fifteen dollars a square foot, that because it's public property, you have to put it out in an RFP standpoint, from a leasing standpoint. Now, through the RFP, if somebody wants to purchase or own, another option is for you to potentially submit whoever does your all's numbers for it to make sense, and so it's not really a very simple, hey, we can go ahead and extend this lease for six months or a year. There are other noticing requirements and, and appraisals that have to be met through the RDC to even be able to lease this property or continue to lease this property. So, I just want you all to understand that from a legal, uh, manner, and, and I think that's where maybe Councilman McBoy, you're going with some of this, uh, line of questioning.
Well, if you look at fair market value, let's just, I, I, I'm a realistic guy. I think, well, most of you all may, may or may not know me, but I know Robin's probably heard me speak a few times, I'm a pretty realistic, fair, consistent guy. Let's just say you use ten thousand square feet, okay, give or take, in your favor. Uh, fair market value on, uh, space like that today, somewhere between eight to twelve dollars, so let's just do seven, okay? Give you the benefit of the doubt. Twelve thousand square feet at seven dollars a foot rental is somewhere in a neighborhood of, what, eighty-four thousand, eighty-four hundred a month, something like, eighty-four hundred, not eighty-four thousand. Uh, plus utility, that, that would be, I, I just want to make it fair for you all to be able to operate, to take care of the kids that you need to take care of, have your plan to get to where it is that you need to be. Uh, I mean, I would be a fool to, to vote to extend a lease if you're not going to stay in town, that wouldn't make a whole lot of sense, because you're just using us as a stepping stone to get to the next spot.
It was in twenty-three years.
I understand that.
Maybe it's not like we haven't wanted to be here this whole time.
No one's, no one's said that.
Yeah.
I haven't said that, okay?
If anyone's helping with that.
I'm sorry? I didn't hear you.
If anyone's here helping them.
I have not helped.
If you want to speak, you need to come up here and state your name.
Yeah, she's, she's okay, she's.
Charlie, yeah, sure.
I, I haven't, no. Um, and as, my, my job as a, as a councilperson wouldn't be to go out and do realist.
Have you cared about their future?
I do, I care about everybody's future. I mean, I, I, but at, at the same time, I always, I have to vote in accordance, not with a handful of people, okay, but other people who say, my kids don't go to Growing Minds, my kids never went to Growing Minds, why am I paying? And I promise you, there will be people.
Sir, can I finish?
Okay, if you want to speak, feel free to come on up and speak. You, you, you're, you're talking from the back of the room, I'm trying to answer her question. Feel free, you can sit right up here if you want. Ma'am, the answer to your question is, I am responsible to all the constituents, and, and again, I vote according to what, that, that group of people. Now, if you want to put this out for a much larger net, you're probably gonna be surprised to say that, no, I don't want my tax dollars paying for a private business to operate when my kids don't go there. I get that now. People say that now, my kids don't go to Silver Creek, why should I vote for that? That is some of the mentality that's out there. Me, on the other hand, saying, I'm willing to work with you all to try to find the best deal, but I can't, I can't vote for just a handful, couple of people when I have an entire district that I'm responsible with. So, sir, what was your question, from the back of the room?
I was asking if you're, if you're getting requests right now.
Yes, I've had, I've had several conversations.
They want the same deal that's, that they're getting. And they are existing businesses in the town of Sellersburg.
Now, are they existing businesses that provide public utilities similar to preschool? I think you mentioned so.
It's a private business, they, they have no affiliation with the school.
In the vacuum, yes, it's a, it's a private business.
That's the way we have to look at it.
I understand that, but with respect, the only part in the department that's against the rule of lease, the lease involved hypotheticals.
This is not hypothetical.
About this as if it's a pedlar small store, it's not a barber shop, but the fact of the matter is this preschool that has not only benefits for Sellersburg, as you mentioned, great people income around the community, who are then spending their money in Sellersburg, and I understand that these are transient, these are very small, tangential, knock-on benefits, but I'm curious what the town of Sellersburg sees as the upside of not having growing minds in the next year, as if there is some other business that's dying to get in that building. Uh, it's a very unique building, a very, very unique challenge, and it's hard for me to imagine, it's different private business, it's going on with this private business. It's hard for me to imagine a private business that would be more successful in the area, that would provide more benefit to the town of Sellersburg and citizens, uh, and that would provide any tax, tax benefits, that, I just don't necessarily see a situation where there's an outcry among the public that they can't stand the fact that their tax dollars are coming from preschool town, and they would much rather, I think, make it more be a pedlar, which is like the only thing I can imagine.
It wouldn't be a pedlar.
Wouldn't be a pedlar.
I'm sorry, but with no disrespect, I'm just curious.
That would, that would be up to the developer, could be an office bill.
It would be up to the developer, who is a hypothetical, he's.
He's not gonna let you talk. Let's move on, ma'am. We're gonna move on, sorry, sir.
I just wanted to know, I think, I mean, you did the quick math and said eighty-four hundred dollars, and our proposal was that our lease go up to seventy-six hundred dollars, there's not that much in between there, so that, I mean, that's, that was your quick math, and that's our quick math, but I, like what Randy said, I feel like there's some room for that to go in both our favor, so.
Are you willing to pay a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for one year?
For that?
No. A year, for a whole year? From, from year to year? I mean, you, you, the, the school system gave you three, they give you three, they give you three months where you don't pay for, because you're not using. Would you be willing to pay a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for, from June one of twenty-six to June one of twenty-seven? That would be, that would be a question. And be, and be responsible for everything?
And all this is my responsibility, because I'm the person who works all the finances, I'm a half the brother's son, I mean, I can't just say yes or no.
Sure, that's what I'm saying, that's why we're here talking.
Right, and I don't want to say that yes, because then our parents shoulder all that burden, and, you know, so that's, but, but.
Well, here, here's.
I, we asked for all the expenses for the building, we were given those, but they weren't that much, so that's.
Well, I, I know, I know, but I mean, just, I'm, I'm just throwing something out here, Robin, okay? I'm just sitting here saying, from a perspective that, yes, you had for twenty-three years, you had a school system that was willing to give you all a really nice opportunity to support them and to help them with all your students, the three-hundred and ninety-four to four-hundred students, year after year after year, and I know that, like I said, we had a couple of teachers that reached out to us and, and expressed that, and again, I just want to be able to sit there and say, if it was, would be considerable for you to sit there and say, all right, I know we have these teachers and these employees that we have to take care of, uh, from.
If you would pay a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, I would want to have your students legit. I mean, I feel like we've given up a lot of things in order to be in that, I mean, you know, we have a lot of things over the last year that we've stopped having done, and we've taken all the responsibilities, and so that's, I mean, there are some things that, I mean, in, in every, in that lease, it says never know when we are conditionally heated, and.
Well, that was based, okay, but that was based upon what Silver Creek School System, West Coast School System did bring. This is, I don't know, but, but we're, but for.
I'm just saying, we have our kids that have to, we're going to go in a different place, so that would be in the consideration if we could pay that much, if I.
So, I understand exactly where you're coming from, and I'm not, uh, unlike some, it's probably been a long time, I'm probably dating myself, uh, but I had three kids that went to another preschool in New Alpen, and I lived in Sellersburg, because that was the only place. And I lived in Sellersburg because that was the only place I could take my kids, because that's where my wife worked. And I was a lowly patrolman in Jeffersonville at the time, making twenty-eight thousand dollars a year, trying to put three kids through preschool. And I remember what that cost was, and I remember plenty of nights staying up because that's where the kids wanted to go and that's where they loved their teachers and all that. And I'm sure it's probably the same environment at your place, I'm not doubting that at all. And it's like I said the other night, parents will do what parents need to do to keep them in that school for another year or in that place or to help you get where you need to be. Hopefully that's here in town. And, you know, something as a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, four hundred students, I mean, just rough numbers, it, it, it wouldn't be that much of a, I mean, increase. And they just sent me a bill and I'm like, well, what's daycare going up for? I gotta look at my wife, cause she does all the stuff, you know, she's probably listening right now. I'll give her the credit, she did all the, all that stuff way back when and how she's busy working. I'm like, well, how much more are we gonna pay? And at one point, I was paying eighteen hundred dollars a month for three kids to go to preschool. So I know what it's like, I know the hardship. And you know what, if I couldn't have done it, I'd have drove my kids halfway across the county to go to another preschool if I knew they were going to be safe, be educated. So as parents, I appreciate everybody's concern, but at the end of the day, is it the government's responsibility to make this happen? Where, where are we accountability wise, as far as, hey, we're gonna, we're willing to meet you here, like you said, uh, at this point? Are the parents willing to pay a little bit more to get you where you need to be? Cause at the end of the day, you're servicing their children, keeping them in a safe place. If we are in a lease and we have to provide heat in the building, then we should one hundred percent honor the lease and make sure that there's heat in the building. That's pretty basic, pretty simple. I haven't heard that, that's the first time that I've heard that there's no heat in the gym, and I believe it. If there's not, we need to find a way to make sure that we're honoring our side of the lease. I don't know that to be, I, I don't know what that is, so I haven't been there, so I'm not there, I, I couldn't tell you. I believe you, if that's what you're asking. Long story short is, I think that this council has sat here tonight and listened to you all and said, where's, how, how are you willing to meet us in, in the middle here? How willing are the parents? Is, is their, their cost per child per month going to go up thirty bucks? Is that, is that a make or break? Is that a, well, we're not, we're not gonna go to, uh, Growing Minds anymore, we're gonna go to this? No, no one likes their bills to go up, no one likes their taxes to go up. I get it, people are tired of being nickel and dime, they're sick of it, okay? But we're talking about our kids. We filled this room up tonight because we're talking about kids. So are parents willing to pay another fifteen dollars a month? I would, I would venture to say if I took a show of hands, just about every hand in this room would go up if it was fifteen dollars more a month or twenty dollars more a month. And they knew that they had heat inside that gym, they knew they can get you. Now, what I would say is, I would hope that you stay in Sellersburg and not just use us for a year to go to some other place. And if you do, that's fine, it is what it is. And whatever the agreement is, I mean, is there a workaround? Is, is there a workaround for redevelopment to say, we can do this, however, if we have a buyer, you have, what, a hundred and twenty days or, or till this date? With enough notice and notification to allow you all to make plans? And I, I would assume that you have a backup plan to Plan A and so on and so forth. I, I mean, I'll be willing to entertain that, but I don't know from your side what that looks like, like.
We've sent emails and asked, but we don't really get responses. So this is the most conversation we've had with numbers and those kind of things. So, I mean, I would be happy to sit down and run those numbers and try to work that out. I just, we haven't, I mean, the first thing we heard was if you cover your expenses, so we got the expenses and we sent you cover up. So that's kind of where we're at, so.
Is having an executive session prior to the next council meeting or whenever at another time doable? Is that something we can have an executive session on legally? Okay, if you want to prepare whatever model or business plan, I, I, I don't think anybody's here to shut the door in your face saying no, but I, we have to protect the interests of all taxpayers in this town and to be fair to them. I'm not a Facebook guy, I usually get ripped on Facebook, especially by Charlie.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, uh, don't deny, I know you do, um, it's okay. I've been called far worse, Charlie. Uh, so I, I, that's not where I, I tend to have all these conversations out in the Facebook world where everybody wants to be snarky and whatever. I'm, I'm about how do we handle business and get things done? Good or bad, without nickel and diming people, being upfront, being transparent, this is, this is what it's gonna cost. This is what it's gonna take to do the deal. And if it's not, you know, hey, it's, it's not, it's not personal. It's not, none of us is gonna walk out of here not liking kids or wanting to take care of kids or anything like that nature. I think we're, we're all putting our best foot forward to try to find some type of happy meeting. And I think that's what you're here asking for tonight. So if you want to schedule an executive session and you want to come to that executive session in two weeks and provide your model and your plan as to what this additional year looks like? And then, then we can move forward at, at that point.
And I also ask though that like, I guess my, my take on being someone who is in a lease is that there's, I mean, that the person who's renting the space also, I mean, I don't want to just say we're open to, you know, pay. I know we've, I've heard if the boiler goes out to pay for that, I mean, I, we can't agree to that. I mean, that's why we're leasing the building, because we don't have a huge amount of capital that we can throw into, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar boiler or whatever that cost is. So that's where, you know, that's where the, the fact that we're renting.
And that's where it comes unfair to the taxpayer.
Right.
Because if the taxpayers who, like you said earlier, they don't have kids that go to Growing Minds, they, I'll be blunt, they're like, their kids are grown. It's not fair to tax, to taxpayers in town to put a boiler in it for you. It just doesn't make sense.
But that is, but I, I guess, I, that's the part that I, I struggle with, that if you're saying that's why the town never does, and you says, well, that's, but I mean, there's.
Well, you look at it.
Every reason you say you'd like to have heat in every room and that's what that said it is, then there's not, I mean, I don't know.
Your, I mean, your, your points are extremely valid, right? But you're looking at it more from, uh, public and government versus private. If it was privately held, they would be in the business of making money and there would be a risk reward on what you're paying and if something went out, it would spell out all the costs. And what Councilman Langford stating is the taxpayers, if they're responsible for putting a boiler in, and then you all are gonna move out of the town within, well, then maybe the taxpayers don't get that money back. And so I think if ever, if all parties want to come together and have an honest and open conversation and saying, well, here's some risk, or here's what we can pay, or here's what, maybe you, you know, poll your parents and say, hey, what, what can we do, guys? And come in and have a conversation and then just be, you know, very candid with the council, because we can do that in an executive session. Whoever, it, it, it may be the three of you, two of you, whoever are the decision makers for your company and for the, um, you know, the preschool, I think that may be beneficial for everybody. But that's kind of the, the balancing act between a government tax paying entity now that's in possession of a, of real property and you all as SLSE.
So, so like you said earlier, like you guys really, you know, are in the recent business, I get that. If you said like it would be a very big deal to extend our lease.
Can be, so I'm gonna have to get.
I mean, that's kind of what we need to know. We, we unfortunately are on a pretty tight timeline getting.
Sure.
Our schedules and classes ready for next year, especially if we, we have to be at multiple locations.
I would say.
So that's what I'm, I'm trying to, you know.
I can get you an answer, I can get the council an answer in two weeks, I can dig into the law and figure out what's.
People do that, or I just was trying to get.
Well, I need to go back and look at all of your leases to kind of see if we do extend, what that could look like and some other things. Since we assumed a pre-existing versus a new, I think there could be some carveouts in it.
So a couple blocks up the road sits a school corporation that has a bunch of land now, but I have to deal with these problems. Kind of Sellersburg, trying to save a building for its facade and historical purposes. For full disclosure, I'm, I'm kind of, uh, I'm kind of ambiguous to all the facade and historical that I'm up front here, and they use that against me all the time, okay? So I, I could go either way, you all want to come to that. You want it to look nice, how about that? And I've heard, you know, hey, you know, we bring people from Jeff and, you know, all this, that's, that's great. To the taxpayer, we have to replace a hundred and fifty thousand dollar wood, we have to spend X amount of thousands of dollars a year on heat in the gym. Someone would say, would throw on my face one hundred percent, cause I've already heard it. So my Sellersburg tax dollars are paying for kids from Jeff and New Albany to come to school here, and I've had to replace all this, and now they're gonna leave? That, those things get said, I, I'm sure you see it in Facebook world, in X world, Snapchat, whatever it is, face to face. I've, I've gotten three emails, uh, within the last week and a half since the last council meeting.
Thing is, we don't, I mean, we, we have tried, I mean, I think people don't think we've been working on this. It's nothing but the opposite, I mean, we have been working diligently on the clean, but one seven day a year, that's real, I mean, we've had meeting after meeting after meeting.
Let's, let's put this i- in another term, and I think you all know as well as I do that the roof on the building is, it's toast. The estimate to replace the roof was eight hundred thousand dollars. At this time, there are sump pumps sitting up on the roof pumping water off so the roof doesn't leak, as there were. So it's got that many years on it, at some point, that roof is not gonna work anymore. Six months from now, a year from now, two months from now, nobody can say. I'm just, you're talking about ten thousand dollars to heat in a, a gym, and I'm thinking eight hundred thousand dollars for a roof. That's kind of, that kind of puts it in perspective for me. Cause I know there's at least one couple here in the, in the audience tonight that are business owners in the town of Sellersburg. And if the roof goes out on their building, they gotta pay for that themselves. And it, it, it's just not fair to have the town's taxpayers put an eight hundred thousand dollar roof on that building. It just has to be considered. I, I understand, but we've done a lot of work up there on that roof with tar and sump pumps and hoses and flashing and other things, just to try to make it last longer. It could go, let's be honest, it could go out tomorrow.
I guess that's what we're trying to say is, you guys really wanted to chose to make this swap.
Right.
You.
And you were told.
Did your homework on the building.
We did our homework, we had it, we had it inspected and, and we were still told of what could and could not happen. And we decided to honor your all's agreement for eighteen months. And that eighteen months comes to an end in May of twenty twenty-six. That's why we're here tonight.
Right.
Eighteen, eighteen months is a, yes, sir, but don't you still have to have a roof? Even, even if they're gone.
But the next person who buys it and builds whatever out of it will deal with the roof. We won't. Sir, can you want to come and give your name?
Sure. What was the question?
First, is it still gonna need a roof? Put your name and your address.
Nathan Endress, two four oh six Plumwood Drive. My, my point is, you still have to have a roof, even if they're gone. Or, or you're gonna damage the whole thing and nobody will want to buy anything. Knock it down would be the best proposition, it's just the point I'm making.
As long as they keep the facade, we don't care about the roof.
That's what, that's what we'll help on it when redevelopment takes. But here's, here's my bigger question. So we entered into this lease or took on this lease, and we have kids inside of a building where a roof may or may not work? We have kids inside of a building where, now this is known, this, you said this has gone on for years. We have kids inside of a building where there's no heat?
In the gym, they do.
The gym, what, okay, but you use.
Right, but there's heat, but we teach the school.
And we have all these other issues. I, in my profession, I would say that was, that would be a safety concern, to me. I don't know how I feel about taking on the liability and extending this more, because we've honored the first eighteen months of extending more, knowing that there's safety concerns potentially. Cause who wants to be the councilman or the parent or anyone up here for that matter? But God forbid, some, some little kid gets hurt or worse. And that goes on to the town, that goes on to the business that is operating there? But this has been known for years. And why, even before we got involved as, as a town, why, why wasn't that fixed?
We have that question we have. That's our, that's our whole kind of puzzlement, like why did you guys enter this agreement when you knew the building? You said you were in it.
I got it, I got an answer for you. Cause the school corporation, which we support and have always supported, came and said, hey, we need room to expand. We need amenities for our, our kids, we need more space to build another building. As our community grows and more kids come in, hey, will you take this, will you give us this land for this building so you can preserve it? At no point in time was I ever interested in being a landlord as a councilperson. And we said, hey, we'll honor this eighteen months. And that's a fair deal, because we could have said, no, we're gonna keep that land up by the park. They could have said, okay, that's fine, we'll find another way, sold that building for whatever. You guys would have been out more than likely, because someone would have bought it at some point, probably for far less than what it is now. Town would have had zero control over that building, you guys would have been out and the school wouldn't be able to grow. So, so we entered into an agreement trying to cooperate with the school district, say, hey, they need this and this is land we're not using. And oh, by the way, we can have this building potentially save it for historical purposes. Then we thought about putting a town hall, and I threw a fit because I'm like, we can't dump ten million dollars into a building and call it a town hall. Why can't we just refurbish this place? I, I took, I caught heat for that. But that was a logical, sensible thing to do, uh, when it came to taxpayers' dollars. So that, that would be the answer to your question as to why. I mean, eighteen months is a long time, I haven't seen you in a while, we have council meetings every, you know, every two, two weeks. You're, everyone's always more than welcome, I love to see all the people here, because typically there's just Charlie here harassing me. And, and this has been a great conversation, but I think now is, we are at the point where I need to see something on paper from Growing Minds to entertain the thought of extending this lease and to put you on a faster timeline so you all can know what you're gonna do with your business. Whether hopefully it stays in the town of Sellersburg and you continue to have a rich tradition. I don't want you to leave, I don't think anybody here wants you to leave the town of Sellersburg, that's not the goal, to kick you out and be callous and cold. And at the end of the day, I was voted to take care of taxpayer interest for the town of Sellersburg. Not Jeff, not New Albany, not anywhere else, but the town of Sellersburg. And I, but I, I think maybe there's a possibility that we could find a way. Or at least put our, or give it all, roll your cuffs, roll your shirt sleeves up, get down to business, find, and, and if it's not gonna work, you just go, hey, it's just a citizen. But at least you, you gave it the, more than the old college effort, is that fair? Executive session in two weeks, we post that? And I'll wait for your, uh, what day is that, Charlie?
The twentieth, uh, twenty, yes, it'd be the twenty-fourth.
I know that's probably inconvenient with Thanksgiving, but I'll be here, so, um, I'll work all the way. Is that fair to you guys, that you guys in favor of that?
Fair to me, sure.
Good.
Matt, do you have anything else you want to say?
Five o'clock. Be an hour prior than the meeting.
They're all retired, they do five o'clock, I was begging for six or seven, like, for six years and they won't do it for me.
All right, so real quick, I mean, a lot of this was thrown on kind of last minute. So I mean, I didn't, you know, I read emails, saw the emails, you know, I'm, I'm compassionate, you know, I understand, I have five kids of my own. Three of them went to Silver Creek, the other two, of course, are a different school corporation, but that's not here nor there. So, you know, like the last twenty-four hours, it's kind of been a hard pill to swallow because I agree with what these guys are saying. You know, we took this building on to preserve a building. But then the compassion inside of me is saying something a little different. So I mean, coming here, I mean, if we were gonna vote on it tonight, I'm telling you right now, out of abstain. Because I'm kind of down the center, because I don't know which way that I want to go. So we took on a building that was in bad shape. That was on the school corporation that they didn't do anything to preserve that building in a way that we had to absorb it on. That was on the school corporation that they didn't do anything to preserve that building in a way that we had to absorb it on. So for us as councilmen, we do have to look out for the best interest of our community, but you're also part of that. So it is very, very frustrating because it's kind of like we're caught in the middle in a scenario that we, I never wanted to be part of. But I also know the history of the school and where, where it came from and its importance to this community. So I'm kind of glad that Scott did what he did because, you know, there's a lot of unanswered questions, I think for all of us. So, you know, knowing that in two weeks, we're gonna have an executive meeting to kind of throw those numbers out and see where everything falls and, and looks like for me is a good thing because it kind of gives me a little bit more of an idea of what we're truly looking at. Cause we don't want to kick anybody out. And I'm telling you right now, I'm not saying I'm of any legal mind. But it's a heck of a lot easier for a school corporation to work with you than it is for us to work with you. And that's no disrespect to growing minds because I respect everybody that's here. You're taking time out of your schedule to fight for something. And I appreciate that and I agree with Scott. I would love to see you guys here fighting not just for your school, but for your own community. But, you know, let's come back in two weeks and, 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 you know, I'll have to kind of rearrange my schedule a little bit, but I'm willing to do that. So I appreciate you all being here tonight. Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right.
Does it, does it allow in the next two weeks? Not to violate, but more law and community measure for us to look, engage with the cost is, where the talent is when you come. This long as like, well, I need to know what your market value is. So in order to, are we allowed to engage in talks that for us to extend the lease is gonna be next time? Are we allowed?
Sure, sure.
Most, you know, based off of the information that we received.
Sure.
Conditions of the building, fair market value, everything.
In generalities until there's official action and a vote taken and a lease executed, absolutely. I believe Charlie has sent some of this information over at some point. I think you all do have some numbers. Um, I think I saw your all's email that came through with some seventy-six or seventy-nine or whatever it was a month. So there has been some initial information exchanged. Um, I would just encourage that between now and the next two weeks. And, you know, if the council members have any additional questions, thoughts or information that's required, get with me or Charlie. Uh, if there's anything you need from us that you don't have, um, you know, get with us.
Okay. All right. All right. So appreciate everybody coming tonight. Uh, if y'all would like to continue to stay for the rest of our meeting, you're more than welcome to, but.
Brad, I have a comment.
Okay, I'm sorry, sorry.
Go ahead. Um, I'd like to, uh, this first fact I'd like to state is I'm the oldest guy in this room as Councilman McBoy will testify to cause he reminds me of that each, each week or every other week. But, um, it's, it's, there's a lot of moving parts to all of this. It's a lot more convoluted than, than you think. I've been a, a yes vote because, uh, you know, it's hard for me to cut it loose. My wife taught at that school and both my children went to that school. I have an emotional attachment to it, but the structure itself in my mind means nothing to me. It means absolutely nothing. Uh, you know, I, I just seen the city of Jeffersonville or Greater Clark schools, uh, build two schools and tear down three meant nothing to them. I don't have that emotional attachment to the building. As far as I'm concerned, from a structural point, it would be cheaper to, to run the bulldozer through it and build a new structure than it would do. You know, I don't know that that many people are all excited about saving it as a history. I live in this district. I represent this district. I've had very few people ever say, hey, we have to save that building. Councilman, uh, Blankford and Councilman Brad see it differently, which is okay. We're all up here with different opinions. But my thing was, uh, and I had worded it in the lease, if we had a conditional lease, something that you guys could live with, that we could defend the taxpayers because we represent them first. We have to take care of them first. If we can meet somewhere in the middle and do something for twelve months, maybe the roof won't fall in twelve months. Maybe it will, you know? Maybe the river will rise. Maybe the flood will take us all. I don't know that. I just don't, I don't live in fear like that. I don't let that affect me. If it, Murphy's Law is if, if it can't happen, it will happen, you know? But no, here, here's the end of this tonight is you don't have a no, you have a maybe. So we made some progress and that's what we're here for. And I'm not here to shoot down anybody that disagrees with me. We disagree all the time and we agree most of the time. But I'm glad that you guys showed up. I'm in your corner. I'm gonna do whatever it takes to, to make it happen, to, to grant the year's lease. You know, it has to be, uh, within the parameters of what government will, uh, support. So that's kind of where we're at. But, you know, um, I probably don't know anybody here other than Carrie and Robin. Uh, and probably in my lifetime, I've had maybe four conversations with them total. But I do have empathy for what your school is. And, you know, I'm, when I walked in here tonight, you know, I'm like, I'm the sole person that supports it. But, you know, I think you, uh, drawing from the other guys, they're open minded and that's, that's, uh, that's a bonus. So we don't have a no, we have a maybe and we have a, a further discussion. So I think we made some progress tonight. But, uh, past that, uh, appreciate you guys coming and, uh, I hope we can work something out.
Okay, all right, thank you. So again, we're done with this conversation. And if you all, like I said, would like to stay for the rest of our meeting, you're more than welcome to. If not, we'll give you a couple of minutes to excuse yourself. Thank you all.
Go ahead.
Pierce, if I wanted to thank you, Thomas.
He'll give them to him on Facebook.
Okay, all right. Um, again, thank you and, uh, we'll move forward. So, um, next is, um, Charlie, you have any new business or anything that you want to talk about? I, I have, I have, I, I, I just hold on a second here. I'm asking him if there's any new business that he wants to discuss first. I'm sorry, okay? Any, okay, all right. Uh, general comments from the vote? No, that's fine. We're used to it.
Again, Charlie Pierce, ninety-one oh eight highway sixty. Uh, it's great to see so many people here. I wish everybody would come to the council meetings and the redevelopment. There's a lot that's discussed and it's very interesting. This was great, back and forth. I appreciate that. Uh, the, uh, if people don't know, this is the panel cast on YouTube, which was a new A B N A law, which is great.
You might want to, can you speak into the microphone?
I should do.
There you go. Oh, you're a victim of your own. I'm just trying to make sure your people can hear you.
That's a good one. I'm not, I'm not being.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Uh, so they will be on YouTube and part of it, it says that they are archive the live transmission, the agenda, the minutes and a memoranda. So, uh, I want to go some, talk about something else. I know the redevelopment commission is appointed by the town council. And I think that therefore, you know, hopefully they're answerable, answerable to the council. I recently went to, uh, earlier this week, I went to the redevelopment commission meeting and their agenda does not have a line item for public comments and I don't understand why. So, uh, there are a lot of topics discussed. I sat like I normally do. I made notes of some questions that I might have. I waited patiently and politely to be able to ask my questions. However, just before the redevelopment commission president asked for a motion to adjourn, I raised my hand and basically was ignored, ignored. When I say that, basically ignored, he went on and asked for a motion to adjourn the meeting, which they did. It did, he did say, hey, I, you know, I can ask my questions after the meeting. Well, I don't understand that. There's a lot of people contrary to somebody I might believe. There's a lot of people at home that may be watching these meetings. They might have the same questions I do. So I don't understand why there's not a place on earth and why, why we're not allowed to ask questions. It's like people get irritated if, you know, if you want to ask questions. Well, you know, you all were elected by the taxpayers. So basically you work for the taxpayers. I don't understand again why.
Did you ever ask me a question?
No. No, I said, no, I didn't say you all didn't answer the questions. No, no, not at all. You always answer my questions.
Ask your question, Jake. Is the redevelopment commission required to have public comments on the building?
They're not.
Well, I know they're not. I'm just saying, I know they're not.
It, it's just about, they do in their meeting.
I understand that and I understand they, they answer to the council. So to me, if you don't have a.
Was your request to add public comments?
Yes, and I've asked that before and it hasn't been done. Okay, that's okay.
All I ask for is a group of people.
Yeah. Oh, I am. That's what I'm doing. Uh, you know, we always talk about transparency and, uh, one of the things it says at the beginning meeting, it's, I guess it's just standard, you know, uh, y'all vote on approving the last minutes based on whatever. And I don't know if I'm not looking in the right place for minutes of previous meetings, but the last redevelopment meeting minutes I found on the website was from August twenty-fourth meeting. Uh, again, just as a taxpayer, whether it's on the agenda or not, it should be. We should have the right to speak up and ask questions and get answers during. I don't know, it's almost like, well, I don't want to be, I don't want to be recorded saying that. Why not, you know? What's there to hide? It's transparency. Ask the questions. So that's just where I'm coming from. I would like to see all this, just to see, I would like to see a line item on that agenda to say, public comments and have an opportunity to speak up. I don't speak up every time, y'all, y'all realize. A lot of times, but, and I don't always say negative things. I say positive things, so for what it's worth, that's just what I'm here for. So, all right, thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay, all right, we'll move on forward, Charlie. Staff report.
Finished up, uh, water valve project and shut off, replaced a couple hydrants and added five valves in the Jericho segment system. We finished a water main replacement project last week around the street here off Utica, thirty-one low kates, took up, uh, moving through that. I know they've done quite a bit of re-low on some of the water stuff. They're starting on the sewer relocations here soon and, and probably uncover a lot of stuff. Um, some upcoming events, um, Santa parade through parks is on January sixth. Um, same time, we may update some of the, uh, mapping depending on some of the stuff going on sixty. I know they got sixty backed open. Councilman Boy, I'm probably gonna ask that question. Um, related to that, they got some ongoing stuff. It's outside of limits. It is an end dot project. They're basically working through getting some of the issues worked out with that. Um, Santa parade December sixth. Um, offices will be closed tomorrow for Veterans Day. So trash collection, that's going to be collected on Tuesday. Uh, trashing yard waste will be collected on Wednesday on a double route. Um, and we also have a blood drop coming up in January. I think that's the third or fourth annual that we have coming up. So, um, getting down through some of the items. Try to get some of these last minute items closed out while we have weather still.
What about, uh, what about, uh, a lot of Wokerston Park, you know, and that's what they, they're gonna be the twenty eighth?
It's gonna be a formal event, but we'll have that up ready to go right after.
All right, just checking, thank you.
Yes, unless you have a question. Thought you might.
So are they going to come back and repay that section of sixty?
So it is not fixed and is not finished.
Yeah, head wall.
So the issue became when they were putting in a head wall on the west side of sixty, they began to excavate that out. They had to do, uh, at the time it was Silver Creek water, relocated a water main to make room for the project. I think a combination of that project and excavation, there was an R M C utility pole that began to basically fall. So they have paused the project. What they decided to do was come back and reopen sixty to make it able to be traveled, um, to remove the temporary stoplights that were basically holding up traffic pattern in that area. Um, and so they could figure out a good means or redesign for the headwall system of that drainage pipe. When they come in to do that type of work, they will basically initiate flaggers while they are working on that. And then they will come back and do a finishment.
How many times do they only come back?
I can't answer that as many times as needs, I guess.
Down the one lane again, drive the backup all the way past Charlie Pierce's house and he could have sent me emails and fun about driving, kicking out the driveway. For like the ninth time, cannot, can we not get it together out there and fix this problem?
I think that's what the, um, delay is, is them trying to figure out how to make sure it's fixed properly.
I said before, I'll say it again, I'm way too tired and done so.
Well, the original issue and the original, this project, so the way the end dot works is typically they run on a five year rotation. They will put together a plan of work for projects that run out five years within the fiscal year of the state. Some of those projects happen within that five year timeframe. Some of them get bumped up because that is funding for the entirety of the state. So if there's a project in Greenwood that doesn't happen and there's available funding and another project is shovel ready, it may get bumped. It may get pushed.
I'm not trying to cut smaller.
I understand.
It's gonna take five years to fix this road right the first time.
Well, the first time was a failure of the pipe under the highway, which was part of the reason why they had this planned to do a repair. It just failed before they repaired it. So they came in and did an emergency repair on a pipe separation under the road, which is what caused the undermining in the roadway.
All right, so we should all expect the temporary lights to go back.
They will not put up temporary lights for this. They will do flagging as needed as they come back to finish that.
Okay.
So in the next several years, just so everybody understands, there's going to be a project at St. Joe East that will have impacts. They're putting in a stoplight. There will be a project at St. Joe West, same impact. There is another culvert replacement just south of where they did it, just north, just past the Stone Gate neighborhood. There are multiple projects up and down sixty that are gonna be happening here over the next year or two. That will have similar impacts as they work through to do improvements up and down sixty.
All right, anybody else have anything, Charlie? Okay, all right. Assistant Chief Madams, anything tonight? You got anything?
Just a call to the police staff.
Yes, sir.
Downstairs.
Yes, sir.
Problem, issues?
Yes, sir.
Holidays coming up.
Yes, sir.
You don't need to drive through.
We're out, we're out.
All right.
Any problems at Halloween, uh, moving the goblins, flipping trees past your clock? Sound anybody?
Absolutely not.
You summon any, any young kids in the quarter at eight thirty, uh, for trick tricks relate?
Yes, sir.
Next year, I think, you all should set the trip. It's more than blank for this part. It ends early, we have a lot of things to play with. Over the conference sex. So we'll tell us.
I'm about to smash nobody's pumpkins either. I haven't seen none on the road.
No, I'm excited and important.
Andrew, you ready tonight or J T L?
We got Mike Harris.
I'm afraid I'm not.
Where's he at? I haven't seen him in forever. Where's he at?
He's an upstairs neighbor.
I hope he's watching.
He says he's gonna be, he says he'll be watching.
Oh, first time ever, no blue on the first page.
No blue on the first page. We did not. You'll find them in the, uh, third page.
Uh, so, we have four water projects, give you an update on, the first is the Sunflower Valley Water System. We're finishing up our design for IFA, we should be ready to move forward with bidding that project in early two thousand twenty-six. Uh, the lead service line inventory, the fieldwork for that project is complete, um, no lead was found in the town of Sellersburg. For the NDOT thirty-one West Utility Relocation that Charlie had spoken about, excuse me, uh, the update is that our contractor, Lawyer Excavation, has completed the relocation of Waterline I near the Silver Creek Middle School. They're ready to move on to Waterline J, also near, near the middle school, once complete with that, they're gonna transition over to the sewer line near that same school. The JTL team has met with the contractor to discuss the construction schedule and the progress made to date. A substantial completion date for this project is about one month from today, on, uh, December the seventh. The final completion date is meant to be January sixth. The contractor has asked to push substantial completion back two weeks. For their part, they've committed to work Saturdays, uh, they've added a second crew to keep up with the project. We've requested a, a formal, uh, revised construction schedule to review, uh, we have not yet extended, uh, granted that extension, uh, so the contract hasn't been changed to this point, that's underway. Correct. Correct.
Councilman, I think some of this was related to weather delay, um, but also in the area of work that they're working over at the middle school, our mapping over there is subpar, um, as it relates to the number of times the school has been remodeled, modeled, remodeled, torn up, redone again and again and again over the years. Um, I know at least three or four different construction projects over there where they were working, um, and I spent probably two and a half solid days over there last week to get some of the stuff figured out, on what water lines go where, to what, on some of these things. So, some of it may be on us, um, some of it, again, is I think, I'm seeing weather delays and some of that stuff. We tried to do it on this one, and the cost was, um, extensive, two or three nights shows.
Oh, you're just fine. The last water project update you want is the, uh, Drinking Water Preliminary Engineering Report and Asset Management Plan. So, that was submitted earlier this year to IFA, uh, didn't make the fundable range on those projects, but we have a couple other avenues to try to get funding, um, that we're exploring. Uh, for wastewater projects, there's the Town Center Sewer Extension Project. Mark Lacy from our firm, um, went out with, uh, Brad last Thursday afternoon, uh, to meet one-on-one with property owners in the area to discuss easement acquisitions. We changed some of the language in the letters that we'll be sending out, uh, just, really just associated with the timing of how those are gonna be going. Sorry, the timing of how the project will proceed, those letters will be sent out to property owners, uh, probably tomorrow, and we're gonna continue to discuss with property owners, uh, as those letters go out. So, we wanna be available to people, meet them where they're at to explain the, the project and the easement acquisition process. Uh, that write-up for thirty-one West Utility Relocation for Wastewater is identical to the water description I just went over. IV Tech Pump Station Number Two Elimination, uh, construction should be starting next Monday on that project. The update, uh, for road projects, uh, we had assisted, uh, the town manager with submission of application prior to the October thirty-first deadline. That's all of my updates.
Good, alright. Not have anything, Andrew?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Jake, you have anything this evening? Okay, alright. Jerry?
I just wanna say tomorrow is Veterans Day, and I appreciate all the, all the servicemen and women who are from our town and local towns around us, and every city, and anybody in our country that is serving the community, thank you for your service.
Yes, sir. Alright, Matt? Okay, yeah, I think we all say that, uh, Randy?
Yes, uh, I'd like to, uh, since Terry wrote of Veterans Day, like to, uh, acknowledge, uh, Mr. Kammer, my neighbor, he's ninety-six years old, passed away Saturday. He was a Korean War veteran, uh, served on his council and on the school board. He's just a real rock in this community, and, um, just, uh, ask that we lift up his family in prayer. Outside of that, with the, appreciate the board's, um, input and, um, raising issues and maybe helping explain some of the difficulties to some of the people with growing minds. It's, it's not cut and dry, there's, there's a lot to it, there's a lot of moving parts, but, um, I'm, uh, I'm hopeful that we can work out something for you guys, uh, and just on a, you know, temporary basis, basically going forward. But, outside of that, just, um, just looking forward to the holidays, um, you know, just, proud that, uh, we have the town that we have, I'm, I'm happy to serve here, I'm, I'm glad that, uh, we have the council that we have, that we can talk things over and, uh, not have the adversity that was with the former, former council. But, past that, uh, you know, that, that's, that's really all I have.
Okay, alright, thank you, Scott.
Ninety-six, huh?
Excuse me?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six?
That's a good run.
That's pretty strong.
Yeah. Um, couple things, um, I had a small non-financial wager with another council person who's watching tonight, and I told him that I would acknowledge IU's win over Penn State over the weekend, so, I am doing that in my official capacity. So, uh, sounds like Halloween went well. Charlie, how many meetings does this council have in December? One?
I think tentative one right now, if you may need to add a second.
May need to add a second? Okay, well, I'll be here, if that's the case. So, my days are, my days are dwindling on this council, uh, I expect to be done by, probably by the end of the year, um, and I think the Republican Party will caucus in another council member to take my spot. I've sent a letter to, uh, Charlie, calm down, it's gonna be okay. I can't, I can't be the chief of police in Jeffersonville and a sitting council member, it's, uh, too much power for one person, and I need to devote my time to, uh, the city of Jeffersonville, which pays my bills, I've had a great run here for six years, and I wish I could stay, but, um, uh, since I've been appointed the full-time chief in Jeffersonville, it would, it would only be right that I wouldn't be able to pay enough attention to my district. So, um, I, uh, sent that, I'll send that letter off to the clerk's office, uh, the Clark County Clerks, and I'm sure the Republican Party will, will caucus a new member in, and, hopefully, he does it for the same reasons that I did it, uh, which is just to make this place a better place, not for any personal gain, uh, which is what I think I've done over the course of the last six years. I, I thank the world of you guys, you know I love you, and I'll, I'll probably come still to the meetings, uh, just to contradict everything that Charlie says. Nah, I'll sit on the other side of the room, I'm good. You know I love you though, uh, but, um, this is a great town with a lot of great people in it, uh, it's my adopted hometown, I, I, I love Sellersburg, and we got great people up here to represent this, uh, that are elected to represent people, and are willing to work with each other, so, um, I, I would probably come out here every Monday night for free if I could, so, it's never been about the money or the position for me, so, uh, I've enjoyed my time, but I, I think it, it's only fair, again, to both the city of Jeffersonville and the town of Sellersburg for me to, to step aside, so. Yeah, it really hurt me, it really hurt me, yeah. So, yeah, that's the reason, no, that's not the reason I'm resigning, so. But, um, you know, who knows, I'll always be involved, this is where I live, this is where my kids, uh, are raised, regardless of what school they go to, uh, I participate in this community, and, and your community is only as good as what type of effort each individual person is willing to put into it, uh, regardless of viewpoints, and I see all these nasty arguments, this hatefulness and back and forth, and I think tonight you saw the ability to have a civil conversation and try to come to a civil resolution that's in the best interest of both parties, and I, I hope we get there, and if we don't, I, I would want you to know that it's not a personal, uh, you know, feeling or anything, but, uh, there's a lot of great families in this town, there's a lot of great families that come to this town, um, and they have connections to Sellersburg somehow, some way. So, I'm, I'm excited to hopefully maybe, uh, be able to work out something in the future. The last thing is, uh, I know a lot of my friends and, and, uh, family across the, uh, the area, that somebody that's, uh, related to or has been affected by the UPS crash the other night, uh, that tragedy, so I'd say a prayer for those families, uh, those victims, and, uh, just people in general, uh, it's, it's just, uh, a really weird sight, you see those planes fly overhead all day long, and you, you just never really think about it, and, uh, in a moment's notice, it's, I was at work, and I walked out, I thought the whole city of Jeffersonville was burned down, I was like, oh my God, I'm gonna lose my job, um, but it was, uh, like I said, everybody knows somebody that works for UPS, or is a contractor, or does something, they're great for this community, both in Indiana and Kentucky, so I, I, uh, I asked that you guys say a small prayer, keep them in your thoughts, uh, as you move forward, uh, the next several weeks. Other than that, I don't have any questions.
Hey, I appreciate you saying that, cause that's what I was gonna say as well. So, um, no, 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 and I, I'm no more different than Randy, uh, about Carl Kammer. Carl Kammer's been very close to me my entire life, and, and, uh, you know, uh, he celebrated, just celebrated his ninety-sixth birthday, uh, a few days, uh, prior to the loss of his life, but he was also our township trustee, he's very, uh, good for the community, and, I guess I probably was hopeful that we was gonna have his alley paved be- before then, but, uh, you know, uh, uh, you know, it's, uh, like I said, him and Joyce have been a big, big part of this community for years, and, uh, we appreciated, uh, everything that the Kammer family has done, and, uh, our prayers are with them. Also, um, uh, you know, at the end of the day, uh, we are here to try to, uh, do as much as we possibly can, and, uh, and, and, you know, we do do our best, so, uh, appreciate all our staff and, and employees, uh, I know, uh, we'll be probably, uh, discussing also our, our insurance, uh, I know Michelle Metcalf and I, we, uh, have a meeting with Kerry, I know Michelle Miller and Michelle Metcalf have already spoken to her, so, uh, that's something to be, uh, looking forward to, that you'll probably be getting some information about, uh, you know, it's something that we did last year, we tried to figure out a way to help some of the families, uh, you know, and, and take some of those costs off of them, and I think we was able to successfully do that, so I'm excited to see, uh, what all has been gonna be presented to us and stuff like that, so, um, you know, Jake's got some things that he's been working on, and I think that he's gonna be discussing with it as well. So, um, a- again, uh, let's just, um, move forward and see what we have, okay? And we appreciate you ladies coming in here tonight, fighting for whatever you wanna fight for, cause I mean, yeah, I, I, I get it, I understand, so, uh, and, uh, but, uh, we, it's not something that we, we signed up for even, I, I, we was just, again, like Councilman Boy said, we was trying to support the school, um, as much as we possibly could, to give them some peace of mind, to be able to take an opportunity, like I said earlier in my conversation, to consider relocating the tennis courts, to be able to possibly put in anywhere between twenty-four to twenty-eight classrooms, as well as a gym and everything else, uh, for them, because if you realistically, Charlie and I did this, you look at their footprint, uh, you can put another middle school where the tennis courts are at. And, uh, so, we thought by supporting, uh, keeping everything on one campus, uh, area, uh, would be better than trying to consider whether it's in Hillendale, or whether it's over here on the other property as well, uh, I know your heart and soul is part of this community, and we appreciate that, so, uh, again, uh, be ready for, uh, you know, Lightup, uh, you know, Sellersburg, and, uh, then the parade, uh, coming up, and, uh, remember, uh, our, our veterans, uh, that fought so hard to give us the freedom that we have, and, uh, let's, uh, remember each and every one of those, and, and unfortunately, those, uh, that still have someone in their family as a POW that's missing, uh, you know, always keep them in your heart and prayer, so, that's all I have. Michelle, you have anything? Okay, alright, with that, I asked for a motion for a German.
Someone?
Got a motion by Matt, a second, saying about Scott, all in person, say aye?
Aye.
Seven forty-five.